I'd like to thank everyone for coming to the city council meeting this evening. And if you all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, and we'll follow the pledge of allegiance, big standing for our invitation tonight brought by Dr. Green D. Hart-Neuberer from the First Christian Church in Bonner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. God of all creation, we come before you to welcome you to this meeting tonight. We give you this respect and acknowledge you as our Creator and Provider. It is you who is omnipresent. You are everywhere, Lord. It is you who is omnipotent. You have all power. It is you who is omniscient. You know everything. God, as we begin this meeting, we ask that you would guide our thoughts, our actions, so that this meeting may have success. We also ask, in this tumultuous time, that you would bring peace, tranquility, and unity in our community. Help us to accomplish our goals while displaying your character and integrity. We pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
I have, one of the honours of being mayor is the opportunity to bring proclamations and...
[laughing]
We don't know where it was bottled at.
We bottled it.
Ah. It's a proclamation concerning Drinking Water Week. If I could have those that are responsible for all of our wonderful drinking water here in the city of Bonner Springs, come forward. All in black.
Men in black.
Men in black.
Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource for refreshment, hydration, and quality of life. And whereas tap water treated, filtered, and delivered to our homes as a safe, clean, valuable source of public health protection, fire protection, and the main ingredient for our nourishment. And whereas Drinking Water Week reminds our citizens that over 800 million people in the world do not have a good source of water, resulting in disease and malnutrition. And whereas any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth, and productivity, is dependent on a clean, safe, reliable source of water. And whereas we are all stewards of our water source, upon which future generations will depend. And whereas water is a precious resource, I call on all citizens of Bonner Springs to practice water conservation and help protect our source of water from pollution. And now, therefore, I, Jeff Harrington, Mayor of the City of Bonner Springs, Kansas, proclaim the week of May 6 through 12, 2018, as Drinking Water Week in the City of Bonner Springs, Kansas, and ask that the residents join in the recognition of the Bonner Springs Water Resources staff for their dedication to produce and deliver safe, clean drinking water to the citizens of Bonner Springs. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two introductions real quick. Our leaders and maintenance, you guys know Clint, Distribution Manager, and Robert runs the treatment.
Thank you.
Joining team.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah.
Our concerns are on the agenda.
Everybody's gone.
They left right before you even get to speak, man.
Moving right along to Agenda Item Number Two, which are citizens' concerns about items not on tonight's agenda. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the mayor and city council on record in the open public meeting. All issues will be investigated, researched, and addressed as necessary with the consensus of the city council placed on future agenda. Is there anyone like to stand and address the city council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move our way on through the agenda. The next item is our consent agenda this evening. It includes the minutes of the April 9, 2018, city council meeting, claims for city operation, public housing authority claims, and massage establishment and therapist license for back and body massage. Anything to be pulled by the staff, citizens? Questions or concerns from the commission? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept a consent agenda as written.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Vote, please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Abby?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. On to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is our 2018-2019 health insurance staff.
Carol Sharp, Human Resources. We would like to have the council approve a couple of things, a couple of changes with our insurance plan. The first one being that we eliminate our in-network buy-up plan. That plan is increasing this year by 10.6%. It is the most expensive plan that we have. If we continue with that plan this year and have the same enrollment as far as staff, we'll incur another $28,000 additional on top of what we're already paying. Our second recommendation is that you approve increasing our health savings account contributions from, actually from zero to 130 for family plans and Tier Two plans.
Very good. Anything else? Anything else from the citizens concerning insurance? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the elimination of the INO-1 health insurance plan and increase the HSA contributions for covered family plans.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start down here.
She explained it very well, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Very good. Nothing additional. Vote, please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Abby?
Yes.
Curly?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Yes.
Good. On to Agenda Item Number Eight, the Comprehensive Classification Compensation Study. Staff?
Thank you. Before you, as an item, basically, to go over a classification study on compensation study for all jobs, we came by the city. This was discussed previously. Worked on it since it did to this point. The city did go out, forbid, and sent out an RFQ, five feet, where we asked folks to basically put together proposals to meet the objectives, which was, I don't know, total of six proposals were submitted. They were reviewed by a review team of the county's district chief of police. We've had any answer. With that review, it's being recommended that the city award the contract to Springstead Settlement. Thank you very much.
Anything else to add? Staff, citizens? Any concerns, questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to award the Comprehensive Classification and Compensation Study to Springstead Human Capital Advisors, pending city attorney review of a contract, and authorize the city manager to sign the contract.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, and we'll start down at this end this time. Sir, any concerns, comments, or questions?
Here.
All right.
No, just, it's time to do it again.
Yeah?
Here.
Very good. Vote, please.
Even?
Yes.
Even?
Yes.
Curly?
Yes.
Abby?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Good.
It is time to do it again. I appreciate that. I appreciate the hard work that the staff's done already, but this is another example of the concerns and commitment we have towards employees at Bonner Springs, as well as serving our community well. We're trying to do the very best we can for both the citizens and our employees. So, thank you very much. On to Number Nine, awarding a bid for sanitary sewer cured-in-place pipe installation. Staff?
The city council on Goodwin decided for James to be annual bid that we do on the purchase of CIPP pipe. We're lining a pile of pipes throughout the city, about $4,000 contract. We did get two bids in, companies that we've worked with, and SAK Construction and City Forum SAK was the little bid.
All right. Anything else? Seeing none, any questions from the citizens concerning pros or cons with our cured-in-place pipe installation? Seeing none, we'll need a motion for us to discuss, so I'll entertain a motion concerning this item.
Mr. Mayor, I make...
Oh, I make a motion. I make a motion to award the bid for sanitary sewer CIPP to SAK Construction LLC for an amount not to exceed $87,868.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, and first, we can start with you and your concern.
I was curious, does this go up, like, to what degree are they doing it? Are they doing it up to citizens' homes, or, like, just purely at the line?
We're not giving services.
How do, are citizens able to get that done, or request it?
They, none of them is contracted.
Okay.
It's a different process because it's a different pipe size, as far as generally. There's some processes out there that we think, a lot of cities are working at, trying to aggress the service issues, these two of the highways.
Yeah.
Generally, what we're doing, we're trying to, we are still getting eye on eye off the service lines, and we'll continue to do so until something fixed with the service lines. The expense is high for the homeowner, and we understand that, so.
Yeah. Does it affect tie-ins? Like, if the lines are to crush? I'm asking, because I've had that happen on houses I've managed.
We re-tapped those taps if they're, I mean, unfortunately, we've got a lot of break-in taps, which is, for reference, a break-in tap is on an old line, that there was a factory tap where the contractor was supposed to connect through this line.
Oh, yeah.
They, when they hit the main, they were two feet away, so they took their hammer out and put our pipe, and shoved the pipe in, it's called a break-in tap. We have a lot of those, and those are...
Oh, okay.
So, we identified all those when we did the inspections, all this work that we turned off, the CCTV work, so it's a two-step process.
Okay.
We CCTV, we analyze what we got out there, so we see all those taps in that engine section, and we can come back and fix those issues, but any of those issues right now won't get fixed with this.
Okay.
But we would address those for consideration later? Or not address them? Our policy, and this is pretty common out there, the homeowners are responsible for their sanitary sewer.
Okay. Gotcha. Would the homeowners be notified of?
We notify them if we see issues that are causing us problems.
Okay.
As far as if there's root intrusion on any of the things.
Oh, okay.
If there's a protruding tap, which the reason, the reason the taps are actually protruding is they shove that pipe at our main instead of putting it into a T, which would be on the outside of the main.
Exactly.
That's typically what you want to do, but that's not what they did years ago. They shoved these pipes in, so sometimes we've got protruding taps. Part of this contract would be for them, they have the ability to cut those taps inside that main.
Oh, okay.
We get a clean seal up against that tap when we put our liner in, but we're not fooled by the fact that it probably could still leak through that connection.
Connection.
And it's another process to actually get...
Are we going to have some system of having those marked? Like, so that somebody can go back?
We know where they're at based on the CCTV.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Amen.
Is this just the first? I mean, you've got the list here of 550 feet. Is this the first step of all over Bonner?
We've done, you've got me here, we've done almost half a million dollars of this line, of this line, where it's over the last five, six years. So, we're lining, we increased the budget from $50,000 to $100,000 because we were concerned we weren't making it that way. But this is, as you see, about $87,000 worth of work last year, and we awarded SAK a contract for $121,000, so that's about $200,000 worth of lining work that we've done for last year.
That's what happens in older cities.
And some of the...
We all have a tree called Pipe for me to get on.
And so, some of them have, yeah, some of them have already been done down in this area, like Cedar, or no, Cedar's on here, but Elm.
We know which one's...
Cedar or Elm.
Yeah.
Elm they're doing, but Cedar they've done.
Right.
Any other questions, concerns? I'm sorry.
Nothing to show? Now, we identify all these places with camera. Is that correct?
It's all CCTV inspection prior to this, but that's what really drives the CIPP. We're working on those reports that are generated and camera shots. Generally, what was lining is...
Do you have video of all of that that you can review?
Yes, sir. Identify that with...
Very good. Have you seen any reduction in inflow and infiltration?
You know, I would say we've had some. We don't know exactly what that's traceable to, because we find a lot of different situations. We know that we're capturing some through this program, but right now, one thing that we track is what we fill out based on this, what we bring in, previously, we're on the positive side, which means we're actually...
Police going in the right direction.
Going in the right direction.
That was, very good. Okay. No other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, vote, please.
Abby?
Yes.
Curly?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Doesn't escape me that we're dealing with non-drinking water in this on a night we had a Drinking Water Proclamation.
Yeah.
Moving on to Number Ten, a resolution for General Obligation Bond Issue 2018-Batchet. Staff?
I'm Minister. Before you, as a resolution authorizing the public sale of approximately $1,760,000 in general obligation bonds. The bonds will be sold in June, and they will be used to pay off the Riverway Stormwater Temporary Note. It was about $725,000. And then the design of the Government Services Center and Police Utility for approximately $1,030,000. Any questions? Any questions regarding the resolution?
Very good. Anything else? Anything to add, sir? Very good. Citizens? Anything? Questions, concerns concerning the general obligation bonds? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the public sale of approximately $1,760,000, principal amount of general obligation improvement bonds, Series 2018-A.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Very good. Questions, concerns, comments, and I think we're down here this time. No?
Good here.
Is river view finally done? Fabulous.
It is.
Did you have a ribbon cutting, or?
Say, I went by the...
I don't know if I have one planned.
The road closed signs are still up.
It's got paved, Jim.
Great.
On the repaired part that we did, there's another culvert that, are we doing that?
Yes, and we're getting ready to do that. We've got to bat out the bid right now.
So, the rotor mine's closed for the time being?
That'll be a fast job. That's a liar.
Tis but a flesh. Vote, please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Yes.
Even?
Yes.
Curly?
Yes.
Abby?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
This is the updated one. All right. Rolling along to Item Number Eleven, our city manager's report.
Not to the glory of the Supreme Court cases, but I do want to bring up one particular case as it comes to Supreme Court, because it deals with fraud related to sales tax and a lot of, looking to the Supreme Court currently, with South Dakota's first Wayfair, basically, the Supreme Court at one point in time, not quizzled versus North Dakota's last Tuesday, asserted that states could not require out-of-state realtors without a present presence to collect sales tax. Broadly what that means is if a Wayfair or an Amazon is located in the state of Kansas, the state cannot collect a sales tax. So, that is, it's being appealed right now in front of the Supreme Court. Hopefully, the decision will come down later on this session. But again, if that's overturned, what that means is that any sales that take place on the airhead, I've got to say, of Bonner Springs, will then be subject to taxes. So, again, a pretty important case as it pertains to sales tax. Also, I want to point out, there's a fun little map that went out, that went through the top ten. It wasn't the top ten, it just happened to be ten items that are going on in the City of Bonner Springs so far this spring. That represents tens of millions of dollars that are being done within the city currently. So, I put together a URL on here that anybody can go to.
Literal tiny URL.
And a few other things, but generally, well-received, and gives a pretty good idea of where development is occurring. You can literally drive out to several of these locations right now and see dirt being turned. I was going to include pictures of the dirt being turned once I got back home and looked at that on the news.
Dirt's turned.
It just wasn't that. And then last, I just want to congratulate Carrie and Paul down at Public Housing Gori, who are designated as HUD's High Performers this year, 2017 year. I think everybody knows, goes to do what happened a lot of good work, as well as residents there. It's a great accomplishment for them to receive that, so just to recognize them. Beyond that, that's all I have for your report.
Very good. We'll start down with Councilman Shannon for our city council items.
No, nothing.
Yes, sir.
No.
Amen?
Nothing.
Thank you for the development. I got a lot of compliments on that, that went out on social media, so that was well-received. And also saw there that Parks and Rec, the golf course will be opening soon, so.
Yes.
Disc golf.
Disc.
So, I challenged said council to disc golf. Wasn't that ready? Are you a ringer? Yeah, okay. Just put the money on the table, and then we'll see.
Nothing for me. Yes, on Metropolitan Avenue, west of Nettleton, down the hill, there's quite a bit of shrubbery on the south side and a little bit on the north side that's encroaching on the road, and people driving on the road have to move toward center quite a little bit, which is kind of dangerous on that hill. I spoke to Rick about it, he knows a little bit about it, so just item of attention for you, so you maybe follow up and do what you do so well.
Sounds like a song.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you all. I appreciate all that. Well, the mayor's report this evening is very short. I do have several things. I did volunteer a suggestion at Cleanup Day, what we might be able to name the new course in Bonner Springs. It's kind of short, Bonner Discourse.
Oh, very nice.
I don't know if it'll fly with library people or not.
Already the city of BS.
Product of Bonner education.
Yep, that's what, that's... Tybalt Days, I've had some suggestions for improvements to Tybalt Days. The Rotary Club's wanting to bring an additional race. They've always had the Tybalt Trot for many, many years, and it's been so well-received across the whole, it's known across the whole metropolitan area as a very challenging five-mile course. They'd like to bring and have a 5K, which is 3.1 mile, course also available for the runners to choose from. So, I've suggested that to Betsy also, made mention of that, and we'll add that in in the planning. The Rotary Group is working on their path right now. So, that's good, and we're looking forward, Tybalt Days is about four months away, so it's exciting that it will soon be here. Spring with all the things that are blooming now, potholes are one of them. Some of the other things that are becoming more and more evident are dilapidated houses, and there's some, a few areas that are needing some specialized enforcement. And I know we're, manpower-wise, have that delegated right now. So, there's a house with a porch that looks like it's falling in or fallen down, right across from the elementary school on Nekoni, if you could make mention of that. There's several houses in the, I guess it'd be the 100 blocks south of, between Nekoni and Nettleton, that have some issues, both in the front and backyards, that you can see from school property, the parking lot there by, for the Arts Alliance. And so, those are issues that are always a part of our community, but winter often takes its toll, and so that's, those are things that need to be addressed on a regular basis. And if you see areas of the community that have concerns, or community citizens have concerns, please make those known to the city hall. They can contact either Sean or Amber here at the city hall with those concerns. And although we may not have a specific codes enforcement person right at the present time, we're working on that as well, and there are people to cover those responsibilities. So, we'll keep on working in that direction. Oh, the Citywide Spring Cleanup Day started off, and I'd like to say how much I appreciate those that participated in that, as well as Councilman Shannon, I saw there, and going out in the rain. I was worried he might melt, but fortunately, you've survived well, so thank you for all your hard work. And, I'm sorry, and Chris, weren't you there, too?
No.
Who else was?
Oh, I was thinking of Betty Raym. I'm sorry. This is one of those nights.
I thought, I thought maybe, I forgot.
I was going to say, I'm like, I thought I was a loose name.
You may not have melted on the outside, but I...
Jordan and I, we were in Topeka, like, learning stuff.
I was going to make mention of that. We'll move right along. That's okay.
Okay. I was waiting for just a moment.
Move right along, and the two newest council people took advantage of some continuing education at the Lake of Kansas Municipalities in Topeka, and hopefully, that was helpful.
Truly was.
And that's very good. And it's great to, and all of those that I've been involved in, it's great to see the connection that you have across the whole state. There's a lot of people that are very concerned for their communities, too, and that's the main driver.
We had a gentleman come acknowledge Moon and Marble and how much he loves it, and he says he found out where Bonner was at only because of Moon and Marble. So, he had to point that out to the two Bonner people that were...
Yeah.
Yep. We're known for a lot of our attractions. Other than that, I stand for any questions? Is there any questions, concerns for me?
Marble Days.
Marble Days is coming up, May 5. Marble Days is coming up, May 5. There's lots of things, there's also, Barnier Babies went on at Hall of Fame this last weekend. Gosh, I should have my calendar right here in front of me instead of on the website.
And Farmer's Market is opening May 5.
May 5, Farmer's Market, and what else am I forgetting? What was your barbecue thing?
May 19.
May 19.
Yeah, you got time for that.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't know, I mean, I question a road step now. Hooks, blocks, and bubbles, it's been...
Oh, very good. So, there's, that's coming up.
There will be yoga, free yoga at the Farmer's Market.
May 5.
Oh.
Well, most, most markets.
Yoga, or yogurt?
Yoga.
Yoga. I was this close to being able to take advantage of it.
Yoga, I gather.
Yoga's gonna get it, yeah.
Yeah.
That's great. That'll be good. All right. Unless there's others, questions, concerns? We're adjourned.